Good evening and welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of September 23rd. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I have Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you all very much. I will attempt to share with you the screen here for the folks at home so that you can see what the agenda is for this evening. We have just a few items on the agenda. They are primarily technical in nature, so if you've had difficulty sleeping, I think that you'll find this meeting to perhaps be productive. We have just a few announcements this evening and I will scroll through them. The first is, and this is a sideways chart, I apologize, but we wanted to give you an update on COVID in our community in Dutchess County. It's been a while since we gave you an update to the numbers and that's sort of good news. We have in Dutchess County 140 active cases, six of which are in the hospital right now. The town and the two villages continue to report five or less cases. And I can tell you, having concluded my weekly phone call with Bar College, that they are remarkably still at zero cases and they are getting tested on a daily basis. Many of them, they run hundreds of tests each day. They actually drive them to MIT so that they can get the results the next morning. And they're doing a terrific job, so we want to encourage them, keep up the good work there. The positivity rate Dutchess County or in the region is about 1%. We have seen a bit of an uptick in the community, excuse me. And so we'll be watching, obviously, as more and more businesses open up to see how things are doing. There is a countywide effort with local police communities. Those are communities that have police departments. They are holding community forums. They're remote, obviously. And a forum is coming up this Saturday for the towns of Rhinebeck, Red Hook, Mylan, and Clinton. It's from 3:00 to 5:00. If you'd like to find out more information about it, you can go on dutchessny.gov backslash police reform. Okay, other announcements, unfortunately, like many of our wonderful events are getting canceled. Tivoli Street Painting, which is a favorite of many in the community. I'm the one who gets hired to paint squares because that's all the talent I have as far as painting. It's been canceled for obvious reasons. That would normally be this weekend up on Broadway in the Village of Tivoli. Okay, scrolling through. One other announcement, Oktoberfest Dinner, the VFW is holding not for another month or so, Sunday, October 25th, 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Takeouts available and have a good menu. If you don't know where the VFW is, it's right here in the village on Elizabeth Street. Those are all the announcements. Does anybody else have any announcements that they would like to, okay. All right, correspondence or rather public comments. We had a communication from Linda Keeling. Actually, this was just prior to the last meeting, has a couple of questions and comments. Would like to, once again, get the agendas posted three days in advance of the meeting. We do try to get the agendas all together. We scramble each and every meeting to make sure we've got everything that we'll be discussing before we go ahead and we post those agendas, because we don't want people to see one agenda only to then add on to it. I think at the last meeting, we weren't able to get it out until the morning of the meeting with all the documents. So, other questions, when will Town Hall open? Town Hall is not yet scheduled to open to the public. And for folks who want to understand why, we want to do everything we can to keep our constituents safe and also our employees safe. A good example that we lived through was in 2017. If many of you recall, it was a bad flu year and the flu hit the Town Hall employees here and it wiped just about everyone in the building out. We literally had only a greeter at the front door and government was brought to its knees here for a few days. So, we're very cautious about taking unnecessary risks and we feel that we're able to conduct business as best as we can with our Dropbox procedure. More questions, St. Margaret's Committee will check in again with Bill O'Neill beforehand. Questions about playground, yes, the playground is opening, is opened. And we suggest you look at our signage for protocols. They are on the park. We have 12 hand sanitizing stations that we've installed in the park. Please be sure to either engage in social distancing or to wear a mask, please. Please be considerate of your neighbor. Okay, we have another Jonathan Becker is interested in, are the question regarding the polling districts at Town Hall. At the last meeting or two, we discussed the fact that Town Hall's main room, which is less than 900 square feet, we felt was insufficient to hold the general election for two election districts. We asked the Board of Elections to please take a look at this. We simply got a response that, without an explanation, that the polling districts are going to remain here. That's seven and eight. I am rather baffled by it because when we requested for the primary, that we relocate the polling site here to the school, which has much larger rooms, facilities, there was no pushback on it. They accommodated us, the school district did at the time. And for some reason, the Board of Elections is not granting that request for the general election. Okay, and Jonathan refers to CDC coronavirus guidelines when determining polling locations and also how to safely conduct elections. And we would remind folks, there are several ways to vote this year and we'll put more information on our website that New York State has enabled. Paper of votes for those of you who feel that voting in person is not safe from a health perspective. Absentee voting, of course, has been in place for many years and there is early voting at the town of Rhinebeck Town Hall. And that's another interesting situation because neither Red Hook Town Hall nor Rhinebeck Town Hall have been open to the public so far. So, we will put as much information as we can on the website for you. And here is that link that Jonathan included with his question. All right. Shall we jump right into our rather short agenda today? First is resolution authorizing adoption of the new records retention schedule. And Chris Shaw, Chris is our attorney to the town. Could you explain to us why we need to do this?
So, the State Archives routinely issues a procedure for all of the municipalities to follow in terms of the records that are required to be retained. The clerk's office is the repository for our records. So, any archives from offices other than the clerk's office need to go to the clerk's office for disposition, either archiving and long-term or disposal if the records retention schedule allows for that. So, this actually has a very specific schedule in it about what to do with which kinds of records, bank records, you know, resolutions, all of that sort of thing. Some are permanent, some are for a certain number of years. It really depends. And so, they've issued a new schedule and they've asked each municipality to adopt that as their own. And so, it's effective already, however, because they made it effective, I think in, I want to say, maybe a couple of months ago when it was issued. So, this is a formality, really. But this will govern how we deal with our documents. Okay?
And that's pursuant to Article 57A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law. All right, so this is resolution number forty-three?
Forty-three.
Date is September 23rd, 2020. A nice move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Christine, aye, Jacob?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda relates to, and we have a link on our website, by the way, if you would like to read the couple of hundred pages of that records retention schedule that comes with that law, you can link right there on our calendar, September 23rd. Next up is resolution number 44. It's to hold a public hearing regarding the adoption by the Town Board of the town of Red Hook of local law B proposed of 2020 regarding updating qualifications and procedures for building and zoning office staff. And this ties in with agenda item number three. So, we are doing more and more shared services, intermunicipal agreements. This relates to the building department in particular. And there's a requirement currently that an officer must be a resident and obviously if we're doing shared services. And in particular, this is designed for, we have a few structures in the town and village of Red Hook that are, the single structure is in both municipalities. So, it's more efficient to have the one municipality do conduct the inspection, for example, utilizing both codes, however, and report to the other municipality. And so, agenda item number three is the IMA, which enables this. And agenda item number two, this local law modifies our code to allow, not only that, but to allow officers to provide for deputies to conduct certain portions of the business with that department. Is there anything else, Christine Shaw, you'd like to add to that description?
I think, I think you've hit the high points. The, the local law does make consistent provisions that we have in our, both our building department and our zoning department so that they can, subject to the board's appointment, of course, back one another up with the part-time staff as well as the shared services arrangements that, that are sometimes put into effect.
Right. So, are there any questions about this? We would call a public hearing on it for October 13th, maybe 7:45?
Robert?
Bill?
Oh yeah, I did send an email to everybody with-
You had a one-word change there. Did that get in there?
Oh, I haven't seen it. It was copied, but my, my reasoning for that was that the word strictly is a subjective term and what's strict for one person could be lenient for another and vice versa. And since this law is really just about granting the authority to enforce the law, I, you know, I, and that's what I did for a living for a long time. I never saw anywhere in the law where it had qualifiers other than impartiality. So, I, I just think it's not necessary and it could cause issues down the road.
So, Bill, I don't think I got that email. So, if you could tell me exactly where that is and we'll-
Because section D, the very first line says, "The town zoning enforcement officer shall administer and strictly enforce all provisions." I just wanted the word strictly stricken from that.
A little too stern.
Well- No, more, he's looking for more clarification.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, what's strict for some person is lenient for another. And it's really, you know, it's too subjective.
Should also be kind of implicit in the, in the, in the text, even if you take it out, you enforce the code.
Yeah, yeah, you enforce the code. And, and, you know, the purpose of this law actually is not about how we enforce it. It's granting the authority to people from other municipalities to be able to enforce it. So, this really seems kind of simple for us, anyway.
Chris, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm having trouble finding the text.
It's good, and section D.
Well, that's what I'm, are you saying 4.1?
I, 5.2D.
Oh, okay. 5.1D?
5.2D.
5.2D?
Subsection D of section 143. D, "The town zoning enforcement officer shall administer and strictly enforce all provisions."
I'm sorry, are you talking about texts that's in the local law or texts that's in the law generally that you want to change?
It's in the draft law.
Section five.
Are we looking at the same thing?
Well, if you go to section six, severability-
Put it on the screen for you.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Oh, it's 5.1. A little weird.
Okay, hang on.
Amendment statute. Copy, I have-
On 5.2.
Keep going down. It might be 5.2.
Notice of public hearing.
Huh, that's odd.
Hang on one second. Let's see if I can find what I sent you.
Must we uploaded the wrong draft? I'm not seeing it on the-
Just sitting here. Yeah, I pulled this off the draft you sent around.
I mean, just give me one second to look at what we sent.
Yeah, then you can do a search to get the original document open.
Hang on, I'm just-
Just gotta get it.
We're looking at the same thing here.
Yeah.
Whose background is that? Okay. I'm not seeing 5.2 as been uploaded yet. See if we can get that.
Yeah, I'm not even seeing in this version, the severability, section six.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, if we just don't have the full law in this.
Last, last page or two on this.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering here.
This last page never made it uploaded, that's why. All right, let's get that down.
Yeah, give me one second and I can get that to you and you can maybe show it on the screen.
I don't know if Matt had it on a two-sided page or, but, I don't know. We do a share screen on that.
She said that was attached to this. I'm sure that it is. Okay. Yeah, this version has 5.2. There we go. All right. It is in this version. So, Robert, I'm going to send you this again. Just, just this.
You want to do a share screen on this?
I'm not sure I do. Let me just send it to you. So, I've got too many other things open. It would get confusing.
Okay.
You and I can practice that some other time. What I'm going to do is, how about, as we're doing this, I'll take the word strictly out of this version.
Okay.
Now, show it as a black line so that you can see it. Then we'll have the full document as well as the change. Yeah, because we're, we're just missing a page.
Missing a page, yeah.
Right. Right, okay. Let me just send you that. Yeah, probably, I don't know what happened in the scan, but I think the one we sent you, it was in there, but-
Yeah, no, I'm sure. It was probably a two-sided page and got lost in the shuffle.
Oh, right. Right.
I don't know when it goes through.
Yeah. Okay, you should be getting it any second now. You don't have it yet?
I got it.
Okay.
I'm just trying to figure out how to get it so it's nice and readable. There we go, the last page. Of course, I can't do a screen share at the moment. There we go. Okay, thank you all for your patience. Technology is great when it works. 5.2. So, well, that's what we're referencing, this long paragraph in section six and seven. The first sentence, "The town zoning enforcement officer shall administer and enforce all provisions." So, that's the rate. Were there any other questions about the the local law? And it references all the relevant impacted sections of our code. So, October 13th, 7:45, resolution number 44. Nice move. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much. And thank you all for your patience as we try to work through that. We'll go back to the notice. Next up is the third item that we mentioned, which is authorizing the execution of the intermunicipal agreement with the village of Red Hook. And they reviewed the agreement for shared services regarding building department. And again, this is for those one-off situations.
If I could suggest it also, is very helpful when you have a conflict situation or something like that, or we have an illness, it's, it's a, it's a backup arrangement. And I will say that this is the, the same sort of IMA structure that we typically use where there are basic terms in the front part. And then, the exhibit is where we have the plan for shared services that outlines the specific services to be shared, which in this case include both building and zoning departments. And then, the specific services, this is not an all-of-the-time thing. The specific services are to be provided on the basis of a, an estimate of cost and at a specified hourly rate and with specific authorization for each incident. So, that this isn't a, this isn't, this is not something that's intended to be sort of for whenever it seems convenient. It's for when it's specifically authorized by each of the municipal officials. The mayor, the supervisor.
Right.
So that we have budgeted authority and so forth.
Right. And we've discussed an initial rate of $50 an hour to cover our costs. It's resolution number 45, authorizing the execution of an intermunicipal agreement with the village of Red Hook for shared services regarding building department services. A nice move. Is there a second?
Second.
Bill Hamel got in there by a nose. All in favor, if there's no further discussion? Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you all very much. Well, that is our mostly administrative meeting that we have. Now, we now have our board reports. And we have board reports tonight. Let's go back to the screen. Okay, we have the water board. And Bill, would you like to give a quick summary of what transpired?
The water board is now in meeting outside at Town Hall, the picnic table. It's usually Hank, Fernando, Doreen, myself, and one other member, socially distanced and masked, of course. For the September work session, which was this past Thursday, covered the month of August, everything seems to be running well. We did use a lot of water in June and July. It was hot, it was dry, but things are come back to, have dropped back to where they're normally are. The wells are pumping at about where they expected them to go. And the water test well, is really, the only issue that came up is off of Whaleback Road, there are a couple of people who are interested in coming onto the water district. And I think we're permitted for 700 and we have about 500. And so, there was some discussion about if they were willing to pay for the, for the installation of the line, would they do it? And, you know, it's still an open discussion. Other than that, the wells seem to be, weren't running well and, you know, just maintenance things on fences and things like that nature.
Okay. I don't see that we have any other board reports. I think because they had meetings recently and we'll get those reports for our next meeting, Planning Board, ZBA. I don't have any reports from them.
I can, I did sit in on part of the planning board. Because there's, there are two things that I think it's important to share. One is, the planning board has lost three members. They are down to the bare minimum of four. And two of those members, Lisa and Callie, have agreed with the board, with our board's approval to serve as alternates in a pinch. But various things have, life events have gotten in the way and the three members, Vanessa, Callie, and Lisa, could not sit on the board. So, Sam is asking, you know, that we do what we can to try to backfill those positions. in the coming period. The other is ongoing discussion involving an application for a heliport, which is Catty Corner. It's at the corner of Rokeby and Route nine, Catty Corner to the entrance to the Hanaford. It sits right across the street, less than a hundred feet from two houses and a neighborhood. And the applicant wasn't present, but his attorney, Warren Replansky, was there. They would like to do not a public hearing, but a public information session on October the fifth for all the members, everybody lives in the area, all the people who live in the village of Red Hook and other interested parties, and they'll obviously do it by Zoom. And there was some discussion after that public information session, which we'll get into various details of what the applicant is asking for, whether they would want to do a actual demonstration of the helicopter landing and taking off for, especially for the people who live right across the street. And actually, there are two houses right next to the actual helipad. I drove by there twice the other day, and I think it's less than a hundred feet. So that was the other issue that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention, and I think, you know, Sam could get something to you for the, it was a long meeting. I dropped off, I saw Sam, and he said it went to past eleven o'clock. And they were doing it once a month, and now they're thinking if it continues to be that busy, they're gonna go back to twice a month.
Okay.
Bill, could I ask, have the two members that you spoke of, Lisa and Callie, have they actually resigned already?
Yes.
And so if you want them to serve as alternates, the board needs to take an action to do that. Is that something that the board wants to consider tonight, so that you don't have a situation where you don't have enough people?
I don't believe that they submitted resignation letters yet to the town clerk, and in which case they were available to serve. It has the same net effect. But yes, as soon as we get their resignation letters at our next meeting, we should in fact appoint them. But I can appoint them as alternates if they're members.
Right, right. That's why I was asking if they've resigned.
I thought they had, but.
No, they've indicated that they need to because of their schedules. As we know, we can't appoint unless, they can't be in both positions. Okay, anything on ZBA? Anybody attend that? No, I'm not sure they even had a meeting between their last one. And then assessment review board, they don't meet at this time of year. Ethics board hasn't met in quite some time. Let's move on to department reports. We have some department reports. We have our highway superintendent Teresa with us, so why don't we jump to that? See where schedule matches your report, but. One second. There we go. All right, let's scroll down to that. We'll skip the assessor and dog for now. There we go. Teresa, did you want to go ahead and give your report?
Yes, please. This is in anticipation of budget talks later on this month. I just wanted to bring forward some budget highlights that I'll be concentrating on. And the first one, in order of importance, is reinstate at least one mechanical equipment operator to the highway department, reinstate at least six hours to the highway department clerk, and purchase a backhoe loader. The highway department crew are the first responders in snowstorms and other emergency situations. We clear the way for the fire department, ambulances, and police vehicles. Without plows, our residents cannot travel safely to and from their destination. As highway superintendent, I'm an advocate for the safety of our roads, knowing that it will help ensure the safety of our residents. The budget process in my department asks the town board on safe roads. We need equipment to do work, manpower to run our plows, and materials to fix failing infrastructure. Historically, we have been underfunded in the equipment and paving lines, but we may do with what we have. Although the total appropriations for highway budget has decreased to remain level in the past few years, our Highway B reserve fund has steadily increased. We save money for times of financial stress in order to support our operations. I'm asking you to look carefully at the whole picture. What may be perceived as savings on paper may result in a reduction of services that will put our residents' roads at higher risk. In the past, regular transfers from the B fund reserves have supported our needs. This year, the transfer was reduced and reversed mid-year, causing a shortfall in the 2020 budget. The town of Red Hook Highway Department has had an excellent record over the past ten years. The pandemic has caused the financial situation that will take time to resolve. In my opinion, it would not be wise to add lower levels of service and higher risks to the residents by potentially reducing road safety. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. With our current level of staffing we tackle to deliver, where taxpayers have come to depend on, I can do the asking, but you hold the power to make the positive changes that will benefit everyone. And I broke it down into three short pages. The first budget request, increase the level of staffing by at least one mechanical equipment operator otherwise known as a plow truck driver. The base cost of salary and benefits is about sixty-five thousand dollars. The optimum staffing level is eight crew members, and that was pre-COVID. We had staffing levels of one foreman, two heavy equipment operators, and four mechanical equipment operators. With that staffing, snow plowing operations remained at their historically safe level. Spare crew members can cover plow routes and other work operations in times of illness or injury, and the crew is capable of helping other departments with hauling, tree work, snow clearing, et cetera. A manageable option, seven crew members, one foreman, two heavy equipment operators, and four mechanical equipment operators. Staffing can still maintain levels of snow plowing service, except in times of illness or injury. A debilitating level, six crew members, one foreman, two HEOs, three MEOs. This skeleton crew leaves no room for replacement of staff for the injury or illness. Plowing operations will be reorganized into longer runs, which will in turn place greater stress and fatigue on both drivers and equipment. Increased stress and fatigue will become a safety issue for plow drivers and residents who are carrying the road. Proceed savings will be reduced by increased overtime and the need to spread higher levels of material on the roads during plow runs. Salt ratio to sand will need to be increased as mechanical snow clearing slows down. All of the above can snowball into an unmanageable situation, leaving roads in poor condition for longer periods of time. The town may be held accountable for liabilities that result from the reduced levels of service. The next budget request is to increase the highway department clerk's hours from six through twelve. Originally, the highway department clerk was at sixteen hours. Hours cut by ten, she now has six hours. The approximate cost of the increase for the year is fifty-six hundred dollars. The optimum level, the sixteen hours. The pre-COVID level of clerk's hours enables the full execution of the job description created by the town, which I sent to the town. The clerk can support other departments with website editing. The bills are paid in a timely fashion. An extra hour is benefit detailed record keeping, reconciliation of budget, and research into technology upgrades to ensure proper storage of data for reports and future administrations. A manageable level, twelve hours. Basic duties can be performed in a timely fashion by focusing on billing. Many clerks employed by the town work a minimum of fifteen to nineteen hours. Twelve hours can still be considered a saving to the overall budget, without one person bearing an unfair burden of loss of work time. Debilitating, six hours. It's an unrealistic expectation for the amount of paperwork that is required by the highway department. Complicated software and lengthy remote sign-in process can use up the total week's allotment. Lag time between purchasing and bill processing results in double billing with less time to reconcile accounts. The implication that the highway superintendent can make up the difference in hours is unrealistic, based on the fact that I'm not capable of navigating the billing software efficiently. Over a decade ago when I lasted the clerking duties, I was using a typewriter and carbon copies for purchase orders. The highway department has not been without at least a twelve-hour clerk in the past twenty years. The job has become more demanding with the increased use of technology and expanded record keeping requirements. The third budget request, a backhoe loader machine. Approximate cost, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The optimum, the purchase of a backhoe loader at a hundred and twenty thousand and a skid steamer at fifty-two thousand. This would fulfill the equipment replacement schedule as indicated by the equipment inventory, total cost, divided by the expected years of useful life. This is not the town's historical approach, we know that. Our equipment purchase plan is generally reactive instead of proactive. Replacing aging equipment in a timely fashion saves maintenance and repair, and provides a greater level of safety to the operator. Unexpected breakdowns during emergency response and construction can increase cost and liability exposure. Manageable, purchase of just a backhoe. This piece of equipment was originally on the replacement schedule two years ago, but was dropped off due to the unexpected breakdown of our dump truck, which was purchased instead. We did not purchase equipment last year when a ask for a plow truck was denied. We have put it back on the schedule since it is a critical part of our emergency response when trees come down across the roads during storms. The backhoe is a versatile year-round machine that can perform multiple functions and has interchangeable attachments. Our current machine is twenty-one years old, which is past the industry standard of useful life. The explanation for useful life versus life expectancy has to do with the fact that we used to list our life expectancy at fifteen to twenty years. But the useful life of an asset is an estimation of the length of time the asset can be reasonably used to generate income and be of benefit to the department. Useful life does not refer to the length of time the asset will last. The useful life of identical assets varies by user, and that life depends on the asset's age, frequency of use, condition of the business environment, or repair policy. Additional factors that affect an asset's useful life include anticipated technological improvements, changes in laws, and economic changes. We have updated the equipment inventory to show useful life versus life expectancy. Debilitating, option, no purchase of equipment this year. Delays in purchasing results in increased potential breakdowns, maintenance costs, and safety issues. The capital equipment replacement plan becomes a worthless piece of paper that continues to be pushed on for future administrations. Just like our roads, delays in investment now cost more than later. Equipment costs rise at an average of three percent compounded per year. And some machinery such as the backhoe are not cost-effective to rent. It cannot be borrowed easily, especially during widespread weather events and during the busy construction season when there is demand. I'm looking forward to working with the town board to find ways to save in our budget for this year and next year, and hopefully some kind of understanding about what is right for the department, this highway department. Because what benefits the highway department is what benefits the taxpaying residents, and that's our focus. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. We'll get more into this during budget season, but just a couple of things that I wanted to say. Just like we voted on an IMA with building department, we've had an intermunicipal agreement with the village of Red Hook. We have, as you know, because you've been instrumental in continuing shared services with equipment and with labor. And so I've already discussed with the mayor about their availability to pitch in and help if we have snowstorms where we need an extra plow person, and I realize that that person needs to have a CDL and have experience. But as you've indicated, your desire to have the village take over the plowing responsibilities for the traditions development, of which they are open to that as well, that they would, you know, the mayor is open to discussing additional roadways that would be near the village, adjacent to the village, that they could take over perhaps to help us out with plowing, because the finances are such that we can't staff the department based upon ideal plowing staffing right now, unfortunately, because of the loss in revenue. And so the same holds true of the backhoe. As you know, they have recently purchased a backhoe. I think within the last couple of years, it sits in our highway garage. I do understand the argument that that same backhoe might be needed by them during a storm. We do have similar equipment like a payloader, which could remove things from the roadways. So I realize that your department, like all departments here, has had to adjust. And, you know, all we can do is ask you to do your best, and for the crew, and, you know, if there's a way that we can, and I will be providing some funding for temporary help during those times when we might find ourselves short-staffed for those particular applications in the budget. So, but we'll get more into this during budget, and I don't want to, you know, take up too much time discussing that this evening. But let's continue to discuss these issues in budget season. Okay. We have an assessor report in our packet. Now I have to scroll back up here. The assessor reports, working on small claims petitions, Article seven, that's when people object to their assessments. The renewals for exemptions are all prepared, and they're going to be mailed out towards the end of the year. And this is another department that's had a reduction in staffing. They're down to one day for that clerk. There's been an increase in sales, and we have seen that. There has been sort of a flight towards moving out of the city, and so we've seen an increase in sales. And so the town of Red Hook had eighteen sales, village of Red Hook four, and Tibbely Garden was the one sale in Tibbely. Okay, dog control, Bill Hamel?
As always, a very exciting report. August was a little busier than other months. The only, there was a dog that somehow got out of, during a storm, and was running around near Pin Oak for several days, and they were happy they were able to find the officer, the ACO was able to find it and bring it home. There was an incident involving one of our mail carriers who got bit by a dog, but the dog was vaccinated and licensed, and the mail carrier did not wish to file any complaint or dangerous dog paperwork, so nothing happened with that. They had, you know, the usual go-wildlife call about some animal. But it was generally and mercifully not a busy month.
Very good. Okay, there's not only loose dogs, but sometimes there's loose other animals. I was out on a loose sheep effort last weekend till about twelve-thirty. They weren't found till the following morning. But do know that you live in an agricultural community here, and those of us with animals wake up sometimes to find out that the tree has taken. And those of us with animals wake up sometimes to find out that the, the tree has taken down the fencing and the cattle are out or what have you. Okay, building and zoning. Bill, would you like to also uh give us that summary report from?
Certainly. For the period, I believe, from August 24th to uh today. Uh, they issued uh 31 permits. They did 41 inspections. Uh, they've issued 18 certificates of completion or occupancy. There were four complaints filed. I'm not sure what they are because I just got this report. And the revenue was $12,899 that came in. Uh, it was a busy month uh for putting on roofs. That seemed to be one of the more um. There was eight roofs put on during that period. So it's the sum of this is the time to do it. Uh, and then there was a variety of other, you know, chimneys, driveways, electrical, hot tubs, things of that nature. So um, and this is the season um when the weather's still nice and people are doing work, especially outside stuff, um, they're trying to get it done, doors and windows and things of that nature.
Well, many of us feel like we can't really travel anywhere, so we might as well work on our staycation projects.
Indeed.
Um, okay, very good. Um, Bill O'Neill is not here to give us the police report. Christine Kane, would you be kind enough to do that for us?
Oh, well, okay, I will have to find it.
I can, I can scroll for you, I think.
Um. Ah, dear, let's see.
Look at your ass if you're watching from home.
What was that? No.
A lot of pinging going on.
Sorry, that's not me.
If you want to put yourself.
Okay, so let's see. I s- I have a summary page here, I think.
So aren't you glad I didn't read the whole 47 pages in the building report?
Yeah, I think so.
Looks like we had um 138 incidents during the period with nine arrests and 38 tickets issued. This is for August.
Okay.
Um. In the village of Tivoli, there were four incidents, no arrests, and no tickets.
Okay. And this is just to give the folks at home just an idea of what our reports look like and some of the things going on in our community that the police handle. Okay, let's move on, shall we, to recreation.
Okay, that's me again, I think.
It actually has my name on it, but I'm happy to give it to you.
Yeah, I don't know why your name ends up on that, but um, so actually, as Robert did mention earlier in the meeting, the rec park is officially open. So, and as you can see from the report, all of the parts of the um park are getting tremendous use. All of the court sections, basketball, tennis, pickleball, et cetera, um are full and getting lots and lots of use. So that's wonderful to see. Um, and even the, the new challenger field, which is that all of these are at Rec Park East. So the new challenger field actually already has practices and games happening on it um at a lot of different levels, a little league, girls softball, and uh men's softball as well as baseball. So that is great to see. Uh, the playground is open, as we mentioned uh previously, and again, is getting lots of use. Uh, you can make reservations with the town clerk for, to use the pavilion. Um, and as Robert mentioned, there are um 12 different hand sanitizer stations set up in the park now. Um, one of them is near the north entrance to the pavilion. The restrooms are also open. Um, and there have been, uh, there's been quite a bit of work um done on those, a few little things that have to be completed uh still, but nothing that kept them from opening. Um. The snack bar is not going to be open this year at all, um, for, for mostly for COVID reasons. So um, some of the other issues that we're going to get worked on this year have been set aside because that's not going to be opened. Um, working on the batting cage and also the dugouts for the, for both um fields, at both fields. So that's um underway and some uh dug, dugouts probably won't be completed until next year. Um, as you might imagine, lots of mowing now that keeps the um, the crew busy, particularly at Rec Park West. And um, so a few odds and ends that have to be still finished up, for instance, getting a um, a garage, uh, a prefab garage, I guess you would call it, has been ordered from Bay Horse uh Barnes and Gazebos for the new grooming um attachment that's required for the challenger field. Um, we've got a lot of uh dirt still left over from dirt piles that have to be moved around and shifted between the two properties and also some of it to go to St. Margaret's. So that's, we're trying to figure out a way to work on that. Um, still some other things that have to happen that, you know, the team, the team is great and they keep up with so many things, still working on tree cleanup um and the lighting. Um, in the park has been very, really upgraded terrifically for particularly on the challenge field, but also on all the courts. Um, still looking at whether we can get Wi-Fi um down in, in the recreation park. Um, so hopefully that we will find out soon if that is going to work, if we can. Not only would that be great for people while they're at the park or um, you know, students who are on uh remote schooling that might need access to Wi-Fi, but that would also enable us to be able to put some security cameras down there. Now that we've spent all this time and effort to upgrade the equipment and um courts and other parts of the property, it'd be nice if we could add an extra layer of security down there. Um, and lots of other, you know, odds and ends. The library is setting up a, or has set up a story walk project. And we have to keep um keep an eye out for interesting things. Um, the, the playground turtle that everybody was asking about um is, has been refurbished and is um awaiting to be um reinstalled. So that's the, that's the highlights.
Okay, and we thank Jay for his work on the turtle. The turtle looks very exciting. And it looks like Wi-Fi is happening. I guess Spectrum's working with the uh library on the install, so that should be set soon. Um, Jacob, tree preservation. And I, I should preface this with, we just found out from DEC late this afternoon that we didn't get our grant for uh Rec Park West. We had a significant tree grant application, so I'll be the purveyor of bad news, but would you like to give the report for the commission?
Yeah, I'm glad to not have to give the bad news. Um, so the committee has not met in person, um, but has continued to communicate via email. And as you mentioned, um, we had a grant application to the New York State Urban Forestry Council or Urban Forestry Council, sorry. Um, which we didn't get. So um, that's all of the updates for the tree preservation commission.
Okay, you know, Jacob, I was thinking the um, when Brenda Kegel was out there on Rec Park West. If you haven't been there, by the way, uh, folks, uh, just go ahead and park in our um abbreviated parking lot. It's sort of set down on, in and visually um, uh, you know, it just folds right into the landscape. Um, and there's some benches there and you can try out our now stone dust path. Um, Brenda had a good idea that we should probably uh plant a tree or two, maybe one initially next to those benches. So when people are sitting, they could have some shade uh that they could uh take in because they may be tired at the time. So I know the tree, tree committee is great at identifying, you know, specific places. And, and they certainly know their trees. So something as simple as that, we could uh try to scrounge up some money for them to at least put one tree in and see if it might take.
Yeah, that seems like a great idea. I think I, I would also encourage people to, to check out the, the trail there. It's, it's really nice.
Yeah, it's just a, it's sort of a teaser for what's to come um for the village-to-village trail. And that's going to be a few more years before that's fully built out. But it'll give people a sense of what uh, what everybody's been working on for, for many years. So very much appreciate that. Um. So I think that's all the reports that we have. We do have some correspondence and then we may want to take some action on the two um items for correspondence. First, as we discussed uh previously, there was a request to um at first uh close a road to do a filming. We like to encourage um uh responsible uh promotion of our community. Um, but as we mentioned, we don't yet have the authority to fully close a road. Um, we have had many events, however, that have shared a road, whether it's biking or whatever. And so um, we've asked those applicants to fill out an application. Uh, there's language in our um neighborhood block party um that speaks to events and um to give us the information that they want. And so um, and I think Teresa has indicated that she would like the board to take action on this so that she can work with the applicant on um uh, you know, any type of equipment that be, may be necessary. Um, we would obviously have the usual requirements, insurance requirements, which they're willing to provide. Um, and also um, we would ask that they hire um a uh traffic control officer for both ends of the shoot. It's on a very, you know, relatively quiet road, woods road. Um, but certainly we want to make sure that there's a safe passage for all the, the traffic and that they would, of course, agree to not block the roadway during the course of the time. Now they're looking on October 2nd and 3rd. Is there any uh questions? If not, we can go ahead and approve this and then forward this to Teresa so she can work with them on this. All right, um, all in favor? Christine?
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
Uh, Bill Hamel?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, and then we had a correspondence from the Tivoli mayor. Um, as many of you know, a few years ago, when we were talking about upgrading uh rec park facilities. And um, you know, we have, um, I, I know Teresa had mentioned about investing in, in departments and equipments. And we have uh increased our investment on our paving lines uh from what they were previously a few years ago. And equipment certainly of what it was a few years ago, we could always uh consider more, obviously. But um, our recreation facilities had gone, in some cases, decades, you know, so, certain aspects of the parks had gone without uh upkeep or upgrades. And uh, the Tivoli Park is um, you know, an example of that as well. Um, when we were looking at our rec park improvements, there was conversation about, well, let's, let's try to uh, you know, utilize the fields that we have and the parks that we have now um and upgrade them so that they have greater utility and that they're more accessible. And so the village of Tivoli went out uh for a CDBG grant like we have for our parks. And they were awarded um $70,000 uh to increase accessibility, um, to uh, you know, work on the infrastructure, lighting, drainage, some of which they'll attempt to do themselves. Um, and then there's equipment and so on and so forth. And at the time, we um, you know, indicated to uh the mayor that we would be um, you know, favorable to helping to um upgrade or, or maintain really is what we're talking about in many cases there, park. Because we recognize that children go from, you know, the town's park, the village's park, and share in that uh endeavor. So the request, it turns out that the grant that they applied for, there's quite a gap between the lowest bid.
Robert, can you uh scroll back up so we can see that? You're kind of in the middle of two pages.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Would you like to see this page?
Yeah, for the people at home, I think that haven't seen it yet, that's more helpful.
There we go. So uh, yes, they, they had three bids for the project and I'm sort of dumbfounded by the variance in the bids, but I think it's not, not relevant. Um, but the lowest bid was for 138-ish thousand dollars and they only have $70,000. So they're going to pull from their fund balance um and they're going to scale down the project. So they are asking whether or not we would consider helping um their project. And uh, so what's being removed from like the contract and the scope of work is replacing bathroom doors, concrete apron, catch basin, pipe between catch basins, and then equipment. You know, it, it sort of saddens me to see that we're not even going to buy equipment for a playground up in Tivoli. I don't, you know. Um, so the scope would be reduced to $86,000. Um, they're going to add some work which is changed to LED fixtures. And um, that reminds me that we did uh, did finally have our conversion of the Red Hook Highway Department. Um, their fixtures. And so hopefully we'll realize some savings from that as well. Um, motion sensor light fixture um and a new security camera for their pavilion. They are um then looking at a project scope of $88,579. Dollars uh contingency of 10% in addition to that. And I know that there are some engineer costs I don't know that are included in this. And so the mayor is asking whether or not the town would um assist in that endeavor and has made a request of $10,000 um to make the park more accessible and attractive and available to townsfolk in Red Hook and Tivoli. Are there any questions? These are the line items broken out and they've colored what's, what's being removed that they're going to try and do themselves with uh uh forced labor.
I have a question. You're contemplating giving $10,000 to the village of Tivoli for their playground. But in the case of the highway department clerk who is paid out of the A fund, you can't afford the $5,600 to give back six hours. I find that to be very disturbing.
Thank you.
And need. And I have been told that we do not have funding to pay for six hours for the clerk. And you're proposing to pay $10,000 for the village of Tivoli.
Okay, yes, the village, the village.
Highway department clerk.
Thank you, Teresa. Yep.
I find it disturbing. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Yep, the village of Tivoli is, is within the town of Red Hook and the village residents pay town, town taxes. Okay, any uh, any thoughts uh before we entertain uh this, this motion? Okay.
Um, is there a deadline or something involved? Because I, I was not clear that we were going to be voting on this this evening. So do we have to act on it tonight?
He has asked if we would consider, he needs to make a decision, he needs to award the contract. But if you are not ready, um, you know, then, then do indicate that.
Well, have we um, you know, talked to, I mean, where would the funding come from for this? Out of our rec department budget?
Uh, well, we could appropriate that um out of rec funds. There's engineering lines. Some of this is engineering work. We would have to identify the sources. Um, we can take it out of fund balance. So that's something that we would need to decide this evening as well.
Uh, okay, well, I, I, I mean, I read through the materials. I was, there was nothing that um told me that we were going to be voting on this this evening. So I would, I'd like to. So I would, I'd like to look into it a little bit more and understand where the funding would come from and how we would be covering that before I feel comfortable to vote.
Okay, that works for me. Shall we hold off then until the next meeting? Bill Hamel, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think you can wait until one meeting.
Okay, I remember they want to award it, but you know, if that's, if we need more time to contemplate it, we do.
Yeah, Jacob, what are you?
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I would echo the same things that you said.
Very good. All right, thank you. We'll table this until our next meeting. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is October 13th. Before we conclude tonight's meeting, can we?
Do we have a, do we have another public comment section or? Or I just thought of one thing that I wanted to mention, which is that the village of Tivoli is, is embarking upon a large project to replace water mains in the village. And anyone who's been in the village would notice that the water tower project is underway. But starting in October, they will be working on replacing water mains along Woods Road and Broadway. And so there is going to be, you know, disruptions in traffic and parking, depending on, you know, where they are in that work. So it's probably going to be a lot of one lane traffic. And so I think it's important just to let everybody know that. The construction in timeframes are going to be from seven in the morning to 3:30 in the afternoon. And pretty much every day during the week. So, and that starts in October. So just to be aware, and they're starting on Woods Road, I believe. So and then they'll be working their way to up Broadway. So just keep that in mind when you're visiting the village and wanting to, you know, move around as we go through the fall.
Yes, and that's going to go on for many months.
Yeah.
Project. And for folks at home who are not familiar, the village of Tivoli has had a sewer system since the WPA years, 1937, I think it was installed. And so it has certainly outlived its usefulness, its useful life. It's now on year three. And so with grant funding and increased rates to the users, they are redoing the entire system under the guidance of the Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority to ensure that there is reliable water and sewer for the community. So, thank you, Christine, for mentioning that. Okay, before we conclude, next week, I'll be proposing the tentative 2021 budget. And I would like to know if we can assign October 6th at 7:00 PM for our budget workshop. Does that work for you? That would be Tuesday, the 6th, 7:00 PM.
That works for me.
Okay.
Works for me.
Okay.
Works for me.
Okay.
Robert, approximately, how long would you like us to block off for that evening?
Two to three hours, two, two and a half hours.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, if there's no conflicts, then let's go ahead and by motion, call for a budget hearing October 6th at 7:00 PM.
A budget hearing or a budget workshop?
A budget workshop, thank you. Did I say hearing, a budget workshop for October 6th at 7:00 PM? All right, all in favor, yeah?
I'll second it. Yeah.
I, Bill Hamel, I. Okay, very good, folks. Thank you very much. Having no further business, I entertain a motion to close the meeting of September 23rd. Stay healthy. We wish you the best and good night.
Night, so moved.
Second.
All in favor? Hi, thank.
Hi.
Good night.